Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Delnart County Board of Supervisors meeting this day, July 11th, 2017. We're going to call this meeting to order and take a roll.
Supervisor Cowan?
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Here.
Supervisor Burke-Watts?
Okay, we're gonna pause for a brief moment of reflection. And I see that Sheriff Apperson is absent today. Would you be willing to leave us in the pledge allegiance? Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Introduction of new employees. Any today? Nope. All right. Reports of actions from closed session. County Council?
The board successfully, the county successfully defended the case Brown versus County of Delnart, 13 CV 01451 on a motion for summary judgment.
Thank you, Council. All right. Any omissions, corrections, or additions from the board members at this time to our agenda today? Not seeing none. We'll go ahead and move to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor?
Pull for discussion on consent agenda, item number 11.
For what reason?
No, I'd like to discuss it. I have some questions on it. This is consent agenda, item number 11 for discussion.
Okay, all right. I guess we'll pull it for discussion.
Yeah, I have some questions. I'd like to see, I see Ms. Snow is here, and I'd like to ask some questions.
Very good. All right.
Chair, I'll be recusing myself from that one as well. So I'll just recuse myself from the discussions as well.
Thank you very much. So, we have pulled item number 11. Ms. Cowan has recused herself. We have items five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 12 remaining on the consent agenda for decision. Do we have a motion on the consent?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Make a second that minus number 11.
Very good. And a second. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Very good. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on items number nine and number 10. I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Item number 11, Supervisor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just learned of this Friday afternoon about the signing of an agreement with the Oxford House Sequoia to provide clean and sober residential services from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 not to exceed $40,000. So, I was, first time I've heard of it. So I did a little research, again, Friday afternoon. So I did a little research to see if the young family still own this, because that's who owned the house, 230 Lough. And I was told that, no, they've sold it for $80,000. Now, that was back, if not mistaken, in February of 2017, according to the documentary stamps, $80,000. So what concerned me is, I wanted to see if the neighborhood, up and down Lough, with a very pretty street, is aware that this halfway house is going to be neighbors. So, I don't know if that's happened. I don't know if they are aware of it until this very moment. I went there, I've heard about it Friday, I went there Monday morning to meet with Mr. McVeigh. I called him first, he didn't call me back. So Mr. McVeigh is the programs manager of the Oxford House Sequoia, he was not there. And I asked to see who was in charge, and no one was in charge. There were 10 women there, some in front of the house, and some about, and some, and tried to be helpful. And I got Mr. McVeigh on the phone, and I said, "What's, what's this all about?" And he says, "Oh, we're all excited about it and prevent recidivism." And I said, "That's fine." That's the first time I've heard about this. So, he said, "Well, we had an open house, and I'm sorry you weren't invited." Well, I am the duly elected representative from District 1 in that area, and I don't think the neighborhood is aware that this house, its facilities, and I appreciate Title IX allows that, but I don't think the neighborhood knows that there's 10 women in a house for clean and sober living improvements. And I can certainly appreciate giving someone a chance, but I'm just wondering if the neighborhood knows. So perhaps, Heather, you can come up and enlighten me on this. What is this $40,000 the county's going to pay for? What does it cover? I know that part of it is rent, $400, and another is a $150 fee per month. Outside of that, what about the rest of the $3,300 the county is coming up with? Could you tell us about this?
So, we've had an existing contract with Oxford House, and we're happy to have a new facility to continue to assist people in their recovery in the beginning stages. Often, they're coming from homelessness and, and having nothing, and maybe having children that are also homeless. And this gives them the first steps to transition back into independence and sober living. That is what the funds cover. Typically, it's rent is the majority of that.
Have you advised the neighborhood?
I would not be advising the neighborhood, no. I didn't select the location for the facility. I wasn't part of the, you know, purchase of the facility, any of that stuff. So, we work with the individuals who are in treatment and are happy to have another option for them.
I know $80,000 seems to be a pretty modest price. I, the, the name of the purchaser is Hopkins. Who are they, Mr. and Mrs. Hopkins, the owners of this house?
I really don't know. We contract with Mr. McVeigh.
Uh-huh. Well, it's all come, come across very suddenly, and I, I have received some phone calls from the neighborhoods about, about this. Do you know, Mr. McVeigh was not really telling me all of the rules of the house, but to me, you have a bunch of women sitting in front of a house on a porch, is kind of a magnet for men, coming around. Is that, is that a rule prohibited? What are the rules of operating this halfway house?
I don't have the rules in front of me, but they are all included in that contract. It is very explicit what the house rules are, what the obligations of the women living there are. There are strict conditions that they agree to when they move in there.
Okay, all right. Well, I have some, some skepticism about placement of this house on that particular street without advising the neighborhood that there is in fact a halfway house on the street.
And I could be correct. I mean, I could be absolutely wrong about this, but the neighborhood and the house, that process all goes through the, the Delnart County Planning Commission, if I'm, maybe for the approval of these processes, or no?
To be quite honest, I, as Health and Human Services, direct the services and the agreement with them. How they secure the house itself is not really a process that I'm included in or privy to. So, I can answer questions about the general treatment options that we have for people in recovery, or, you know, who we might refer to this sort of facility, or what other options there are.
No, I can, I can appreciate that, but I, I kinda wanna know where the $3,300, other than the rent, which is $400 a month, and a $150 fee for something, where do the rest, where do the rest of the funds go for? It's $40,000 for the year.
Well, that's the budgeted amount, so we may not use all of that budgeted amount, but we thought it was a safe budgeted amount based on our use of the other facility and projected use over the next fiscal year.
To Oxford Sequoia House, which is a national chain of halfway houses.
It could be less than that, and we could do an amendment to approve an increase.
Supervisor Cowan?
Can I just point of order before I go on? Supervisor Cowan has recused herself from this matter, if I'm not mistaken. Is she opinion to, is she allowed to have an opinion?
No, she's not.
Okay.
Are there any more questions?
I was just trying to give clarity. Is that okay, if I give you some clarity?
No.
No?
No, you can't. The, I just, I just need to ask, there's concern, at least being expressed to you, Supervisor Gitlin, that there's nine women living on a front porch, and the men are coming because they're knowledgeable about this area. That's what the neighborhood's telling you?
Well, what it's telling me is there's 10 women living in this house.
Okay.
I don't know the supervision. There was no house mother there to help me when I popped in on them Monday morning. The only person who was helping me was in Roseburg, Oregon, and that's Mr. McVeigh. I'd like to know who's supervising this operation at this particular facility. It's a simple question. And if there is something there, and I, again, if there are a lot of people sitting in front of the house, and they happen to be one gender, yes, I think that's gonna attract some attention in the neighborhood. I, that's just human nature. So, I do have some concern about this and the placement of this particular facility, and I'm wondering if my neighbors have justification in expressing their concern. This is in District 1, and I've spoken to some of my constituents, and it's what they've told me.
I'd probably advise you to take this offline, and maybe approach the issue with the Director of Health and Human Services. That's just my personal opinion, but you're certainly welcome to express your opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I heard about this Friday afternoon on agenda. It's the first time I've heard about this. There was no discussion. Apparently, there was some kind of an open house. I was not invited.
Seems like there's a lot of questions that could have been potentially answered outside the council meeting, but that's just me, so.
And the facility exists independent of this contract. So, you know, them having their open house and opening in the first place is independent of me developing a contract with them. So, I wouldn't have, you know, been able to bring that to your attention. I wasn't the one who organized it.
Other than the $40,000 of county funds going to support this, that's where your connection is?
Is that a question?
Yes, it's a statement.
Yes, my communication with them and my relationship is limited to the contract.
You're asking our board to approve $40,000 for, for the support of this particular halfway house on 230 Lough Avenue. And I contend, there are not very many people who even know, if anybody knows on this block that this exists. They do now. We brought it to their attention. So, whether you think it should be private or public, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. I'm bringing it to the attention of the public at this time. I have concerns, so.
Very good. Any other concerns on this issue? I'd like to open it up for public comment. Please, approach the dice. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Linda Sutter, County. Well, he brings up a valid complaint. We don't know if it's within the code, and if, and I, I don't know if it's been heard by the Planning Commission, and maybe those are things that need to be answered, to rest assure everybody's minds. And you should table it until you find out all this stuff, because if you go ahead and divvy out the $40,000 and find out that everything is not legit, what does that reflect on you guys? Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate your comments.
I would just add that the contract does go through County Council and Risk Management, as all of our contracts do, so they check for all of those provisions.
And yes, we, we.
Heather, well, we're at there.
Thank you.
Can I get Heather to come, come back?
One more time. I apologize.
And, and I certainly understand. I think, if I'm understanding this correctly, you don't necessarily know where this house is going to be when you, when you, when they do this contract. So they could actually put this house anyplace in the county, or wherever it is, properly zoned and approved. So your, your concern is that they fulfill their items in the contract in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Correct.
So, I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clarified, that you don't have a position on where they put the house.
No, I don't.
On, on, and how they do their end of it. Your only, your only dealing with them is with the contract.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chief?
Lonnie Raymond, Chief Probation Officer. We've had a longstanding relationship with Oxford House. Since they've moved into the county, we've had men involved in the men's house since it was founded here, and we've had a great experience with them. And speaking with Jean McVeigh, the history of Oxford House goes back for decades, and they have a long-established track record of working well with communities, of having good results for the people that are residents of their houses. And they have a great model. So I would encourage the board to indeed support this.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for a vote. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
I need a motion or a second.
You have a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'd make that motion.
And I will second.
Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Very good. We're gonna go.
Just for clarification, it's the, it's not gonna be valid, because there needs to be a majority of the board to approve any item that's under the government.
It's too bad.
It is.
It's a good program that's been here for quite some period of time.
Yes.
I would hope that we could bring something like that back, because it seems like it's just too bad. Jay, how does that work, out of curiosity?
The board could, but you could request that the department had bring that back at the next meeting of the full board. Also, at that point, I think that there may be some questions asked to the Community Development Department regarding the byright use of residential property for clean and sober living. I know that there are some allowances under the Office of Planning and Research, planning and land use development laws, that do allow those in residential neighborhoods. There are numbers associated with that, meaning limitations based on the number of people that are being served. So, I, I think with some assistance from the Community Development Department, those questions that came up today could be answered also. But that is a requirement of the property owner to obtain those permits, if there are, if there are permits required.
Correct. I don't wanna see this drop. I'd like to see it back on our next agenda. Kylie, can you ensure that it comes, and maybe we could ask Director Constable to be here at that time, and I'm sure Ms. Snow will be back for that meeting. It's too bad. Okay, budget transfer items. We have items 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, which is budget transfer item 0701, 0703, 0704, 0705, and 0706.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion?
I second the motion to approve budget transfers 0701, 0703, 0704, 0705, and 0706.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
I'm Linda Sutter, and I live 5th District, and I'd like to first say to Bob Burke-Watts, "Go to the doctor. Get your behind to the doctor, 'cause he's sick and he won't go to the doctor." So there, I said it. But here's the other thing. The 4th of July, well, I know he's listening.
Okay.
The 4th of July was fantastic, okay, on South Beach. The problem is that, have you seen it here? There's glass and cans that do not wash out all the way to the sea, and people run around barefooted out there, and I'm a little concerned about that. The bathroom situation was fantastic, if you could find it. I will donate some LED solar lights next year so that you can put around, so that people can find the bathrooms along the beach, South Beach. Other than that, and I understand our law enforcement was right on key at around 11:30 for all the illegal fireworks and stuff, and they started coming out there and shutting it down. That was a concern, 'cause instead of them taking their fireworks out to the edge where the water is, they were too close to other individuals and shooting them off, the illegal ones, and that, that is kind of risky, I, in my own opinion, but other than that.
Can you enlighten us on what this has to do with the budget transfer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was open to public, I thought this was public comment.
No.
I, I apologize. Well, now you already know. Thank you.
If I may, if we could continue, please continue.
I'm sorry. So, Mr. Hemmingson, I, I apologize. I misunderstood, so.
You've already started, so please continue.
All right. Well, that's all I wanted to say, but anyway, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comment on budget transfer items only? And yard sale items. Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the table. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and take up item number 18, which is Direct Staff to Prepare and Execute an RFP Process to Disperse the Monies Received by the Delnart County for the Community Recidivism Reduction Grant and Request by Chief Probation Officer. Chief, welcome.
Good morning. So several years ago, this board sent a letter of interest to the state to receive $10,000 of CRRG money. This is specifically for nonprofit organizations in the community that deal with recidivism, either adult or juvenile. We have had some difficulty finding an appropriate NGO. Nothing's popped up, but recently, we've had somebody that I think, and the rest of the CCP also believes, would be appropriate. But the process to distribute this has to come through the board in whatever form or fashion you would desire. In talking with county administration, an RFP process would probably be most appropriate so that we can go through the process of, of distributing this. It's a grant, so it would be some sort of competitive process.
Very good. Questions for chief? Supervisor?
Lonnie, how much is involved? What's the money?
$10,000.
Okay. How is it coming? One lump sum, or are you?
It was a lump sum that we've received. It's currently sitting in an account. So we have immediate access to it once this process goes through and, and a recipient's identified.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief at this time? We're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment on item number 18. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion on the table?
Mr. Chair, I'll introduce the motion, Direct Staff to Prepare and Execute a Request for Proposal Process to Disperse the Monies Received by Delnart County for the Community Recidivism Reduction Grant, as requested by the Chief Supervision Officer.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna take on item number 19, Approve and Adopt the Memorandum of Understanding with the Delnart County Midmanagement Association, effective September 1st, 2016, to coincide with expiration of the previous agreement-approved resolution as requested by the county administrative officer. Jay?
So, before the board today is a memorandum of understanding specific to that, a group who are represented by themselves as an association. The Delnart County Midmanagement Group has negotiated basically the same compensation package as the miscellaneous employees have and that the board took action on recently. There were a couple of other items that were included in that that are outlined in the report, dealing with grounds for disciplinary action, uniform allowances, continuation of employee paid purs, as well as the ability to opt into a vision program under the county's vision benefit. The, as I mentioned, the, the compensation package is basically the same. There were negotiated longevity wage increases for those employees that meet 35 years and 40 years of employment, primarily because of the changes in PAPRA that now basically extend out the number of years before retirement age.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve and adopt the memorandum of understanding with the Delnart County Midmanagement Association.
We have a motion on the table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's move to public comment. Public comment on item 19 only. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, let's move to our public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up the matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Welcome and good morning.
Good morning. Donna Westlaw, 1st District. Have any of you suffered with a toothache? I'm going to ask that you pull agenda item number 12 from the consent agenda, and here's why.
Consent agenda is, we've already voted on it today. But, please continue.
All right.
We've already voted on consent, the consent agenda.
Okay, well, here are my thoughts.
But if your comments are pertinent, we'd be welcome to hear them.
Item number 12. Supposedly, adoptive homes are scrutinized before final placement, but what happens after placement? Several months ago, I reported suspected abuse neglect for a 17-year-old child in an adoptive home. This particular adopted mother spent a month in rehab for alcohol and drug abuse, which I find ironic since she was an alcohol and drug abuse counselor. Apparently, she was getting a good deal on drugs from her clients. So while she's medicating herself, her adoptive kid is suffering week in and week out with a toothache, now going on months, actually an impacted tooth. Does she take him to a dentist or oral surgeon, or get any painkillers or antibiotics? Nope. How many more months must he suffer with an impacted tooth and not have medication or antibiotics to help deal with the pain or have it pulled? or antibiotics to help deal with the pain or have it pulled? His adoptive mother gets paid month in and month out. Something is drastically wrong. In my opinion, she's warehousing this boy for the money, and I don't believe she cares two cents for the kid. So how much longer must he endure being with someone who abuses drugs and alcohol? Do you think a month in rehab has cured her addictions? How long has he endured living in a household that has been abusing drugs and alcohol? Where is the intervention? Where is the accountability? How many times will she throw her husband out or the kid out of the house before some agency will come in and read her the riot act? And while it's nice that no county general funds are used to pay the hundred and seventy thousand dollars that apparently rubber stamp, the problem here is that there's no oversight after the adoption process. But the checks keep being paid out, taxpayer money is paid out to warehouse this kid, and I say it's time to stop and start demanding some answers. So what can be done to reverse an adoption to an abusive adoptive parent who oversees that process? And is there even a process to deal with that? Why is it seemingly harder to get some action concerning abuse and neglect with an adoptive family than with a biological family? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I can't help myself on this one. We have, we have a really good Health and Human Services Department here in the county. We have dedicated employees that really look out for the citizens in our community. And when I hear comments like this, it just, it disturbs me because I don't know where the information's coming from, and anybody could say what they want in front of us, and that's okay. That's what the law allows. That's, that's great. But there's two sides to every story. And I'm sure there's a story here that Health and Human Services may or may not want to tell someday. But I do know our employees do their job, and they do look out for folks in their programs. And I'd like you to know that, at least myself, speaking as a board supervisor, do support your department wholeheartedly in the efforts that you're making. Public comment. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board for our ten thirty timed agenda item, which is to adjourn as the board of supervisors and reconvene as the board of equalization and conduct public hearing for a change of assessment. Let's believe it's Speakman for APN one one two dash one five two dash forty-seven, and for year fifteen sixteen. Is Mr. Speakman in the audience with us today? So if I'm correct, if he's not, is he here? No. Okay, thanks, Jay. I wasn't sure if you were saying yes or no, but didn't stand up. So I'm assuming if he's not present, we could just move at this point to deny the application, or is that not correct?
If the chair would ask the clerk if the individual was given proper notice, and then we can move on under rule three thirteen.
Yes. The applicant was notified by a letter.
Thanks for asking the question, Council. Appreciate it. And is it properly noticed?
Yes.
Okay, do we still have to make a decision at this time, or?
The board may deny the application for lack of appearance.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
You do not have to take a vote on it.
Thank you very much. Is there any reason to continue, board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on and adjourn as the board of equalization and reconvene as the board of supervisors and receive a presentation on economic impacts of film shoots in Delnart County presented by Cassandra Hasseltime. Good morning, Cassandra. How are you today?
Good. So I'm going to have a PowerPoint. Okay.
Okay. Please feel free to chatter until the presentation's up on our screen.
All right. Well, I'm excited to be back here.
Good to see you again. It's been a little while.
Yeah, it's been a little while. It's good to be here. And I do have a PowerPoint telling you about the past fiscal year. I'm excited because the current fiscal year right now is looking to be pretty good. Keep your fingers crossed. I can't tell you anything about it, but just keep your fingers crossed for a pretty big production that might be coming, coming this way in Delnart, so I'm pretty excited about that. But we'll, we'll go back to last fiscal year. So first off, some people might not know what we do, so I always want to remind everybody what does a film commission do or a film commissioner? We are the liaison between filmmakers, productions, and the counties that we represent. We market the area for filming, so we help educate outside area, what we have to offer, why would they come here? We assist with productions, so we help them maybe with location scouts, permits, which we work with the CAO's office for that, which they've been amazing, as well as the chamber, Visitors Bureau's been amazing at helping us with scouting locations and finding vendors and crew, and we help foster the vendors and, and local locations as well so that they understand what to expect and how to deal with film crews. So that's through assisting the locations. And then we help promote film tourism, which later you'll see the map of the movies, which has been extremely popular. My backseat right now is full of our map of the movies of projects that are filmed both in Humboldt and Delnart Counties. And I just dropped off huge stacks for Jedediah Smith State Park because they're just whipping right through those maps, which is great. It means that people are staying here and going and doing film tourism, which sometimes can outweigh the dollars of the actual filming. And we are required to offer all these services at no charge to productions, which is why we're always very grateful for the funding that we do receive from our, our different funders. So on here, I have the film activities. So just to, to kind of be able to show you that we're on track for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen compared to the year prior, the numbers are very similar as far as inquiries that came in that were specific to, do you have this in your area? As far as scouts, which bring in dollars because they're staying in hotels and eating and getting gas, and as well as the number of filming. So the, the fiscal year that just ended had eight shoots. Prior to that, we had seven shoots for the year before. So you can say it's very similar. The reason why there's a plus on the estimated dollars on the current fiscal year that we just had is because not all the dollars have come in, which means it's probably actually higher than what the actual figures I have, estimated figures I have right now. So the forty-four thousand, the direct dollars, is the money that they spend on hotels, locations, permits, gas. That's the direct dollars of filming. The indirect dollars is, for every dollar that they film, use for filming, it really translates to two dollars and ninety-five cents. So that comes directly from film analysts that, that have turned in those numbers to the California Film Commission. And so really, the true effect after, because they have to go out to dinner, or they might have a day off, or the money circulates within the economy three times before it leaves, is more like a hundred and thirty-one thousand is really the true effect of what you guys did for eight productions. So looking at the return on investment, I've been doing this for all our funders this year. I thought it was a good time. It's been seven years since I became film commissioner in the region, and your office has been funding us since fiscal year eleven, twelve. And the total, or not your office, I should say, but actually the Delnart, Visitors Bureau, Crescent City Chamber has been funding us, and so far, the total is fifty-eight thousand that they've given us. And that's just comparing that then to the return on investment, which is the total for the past six years there of investment has been two hundred and sixty-three thousand directly and almost three quarter, or a little over three-quarter of a million for indirect dollars. So you can kind of see how it all weighs out. So some noteworthy productions that came this past fiscal year, we had Toyota do a print ad, which was pretty exciting, beachfront bargain, which is coming out in, in next week. Pardon?
Already aired.
Oh, okay, because it says it's airing again against July. Yeah, that must be what it is. And then Finding Bigfoot came and did a two-hour special for their finale. So they filmed in the area, as well as you guys had an indie feature film a couple weeks ago called She's in Portland, which filmed all throughout Crescent City, which was pretty exciting. And then, like I said, going into the new fiscal year, we actually have probably the biggest project in a long time. They've been here for the past month scouting and looking into filming in Delnart County, so keep your fingers crossed on that one.
Did they find Bigfoot in the season finale here?
I can't tell you that. That's a secret.
So film crews were in two different ones, one from Disney, someone else that's filming in a hospital. So what's happened? Because I can't, I see different crews, and I know two days ago, we had two separate crews. One was filming like Trees and Mystery. They won't tell us either how a secret has come up. So do you know what happened?
The Trees and Mystery one? Um, you know, I have like thirty shoots that happen. I literally have four in town right now. And so I'd have to go back and look at my actual things because that, I can't, I don't, I can't remember if She's in Portland filmed there a couple weeks ago. They said it was Disney.
Some of them had Pixar. They're all Pixar characters.
Okay, so, which would have been inappropriate. They should have pulled a permit in the county. That, that I do not know about, but that happens sometimes, so we still get, and so we do get a more of an economic benefit than even sometimes we know about. That even happens down in Humboldt as well. They probably didn't realize they needed to pull a permit with Delnart County, and it, it could have been, probably what it was, was plates. So it probably was not an actual movie. So when they do something like that, it's like, what they basically are doing is taking a picture, and they insert it into something and then put action on top of it. So video games do that, sometimes like those Fly Through Americas do that. So it was probably something to that effect, yeah. So John has been great with allowing filming there. I'm really happy that they do that, but it was probably people just didn't realize. Sometimes in a rural community, they don't realize that that is an ordinance that we do have.
Supervisor. Cassandra, I've always been a big fan of what your efforts are, and I know, was it a couple of years back? Jeff, maybe you can address this. Funding was cut substantially from your program. Now, where are we at on funding now? Has it come up to the level, I want to say the number was fifteen thousand a year, or is it?
The first year it was fifteen thousand. It did get, drop down to, the, the least amount we were at was five thousand. Jeff graciously brought us back up to seventy-five hundred, and now he's asking for an increase to that, and he's trying to work our way back up there, which I greatly appreciate. Jeff is also on our board. We've brought someone from Delnart County onto our board, which is great. So that way, he can have really understanding of what it is we do and what we're doing, so that way, he really knows that we are representing.
Seventy-five hundred is your funding right now?
That was last year's, and this year, he's asking for more. So we haven't finished the negotiation of how much that will be.
I'd certainly, I'd certainly support that.
Thank you.
To get you up to the level where you need to go. I would also ask you to address, and I don't see it here in your, in your presentation, any commercial shoots, commercials. I know they're always looking for new sites. I see Toyota was one commercial.
Yeah, I mean, you guys usually get one or two a year here, and it, they all kind of operate the same way. So basically, educating all location managers. There's a lot of location managers that just do commercials, there's some that just do movies, but our goal is to educate all of them so no matter what the project is, that they'll come up and, and utilize your location. You know, you have to have what they are looking for. They have to want a forest or a river or, you know, beachfront property in order for them to want to do it. One of my goals, which I'm not sure that's going to happen this fiscal year, but it is on my radar to do within the next year or two, is to try to do a commercial fam tour. So you might remember a couple of years ago, we did a fam tour that was targeted more towards indie films, feature films. It did have a couple of commercial producer, or location managers on that tour, but it was predominantly more bigger projects. I would like to bring up some producers and location managers that predominantly work on commercials from the Bay Area. And, but that would take a whole amount of money to, to create that program.
My final question has to do with potential and realizing more for our, our dollar. I see Delnart County as a very much underexposed area. People really don't know. The scenery that we have up here, you don't see it on television and, and commercials. It's, it's rare. So when we do get it, I would think that's a selling tool. You have backgrounds, and you have rivers, and you have oceans, and you have beaches, and you have areas that are not, have not been seen before as to, let's say, the more popular areas in the southern part of the state, or in areas near, adjacent to, to the population areas of which we're not. So how do we crack that area and letting folks know we are really a new market? I appreciate all the work you've done. I'd just like to see it grow.
Right, and so would I. One of the things that we're going to be doing this year is I'm going to be going to Sundance, which is huge because there's a lot of indie filmmakers that are at Sundance that we can have one-on-one conversations. And that's really where it comes down to is developing relationships. You know, the old cliche, it's who you know in Hollywood. And it's not about being fake, it's about really developing real relationships so that these people can rely on you and, and go, oh, you have that? Wow, and you're great to work with? Wow, I want to go there. So the past couple of years, there's been a lot of indie feature films that have been coming to the area, to the region, that have then been suggesting to the next feature film that might be coming up, hey, I was there, it was great, why don't you go there? And we've literally had this domino effect. So that's one thing. So going to Sundance and talking to more and widening our breadth of who we, who we speak to is, is part of our new marketing approach. So we're increasing, getting out there visibly and communicating more. This is one of the things we do, is we do do a newsletter, which gets out there, and we highlight locations. We're one of the only film commissions in the state of California that actually highlights locations versus just bragging about how much dollars comes in. And I am also president of Flix, which is film liaisons in California statewide, so I'm president of forty-one film commissioners, and I finally got them to also do a newsletter where we're communicating about what do we actually have to offer here? And that's the biggest thing, is education and finding all the different ways how to get that message to them. So again, when they have the need, they think of us. So that's why people say, well, if we give you more money, can we have ten more projects next year? And I can never say yes. What I can say is, I can definitely educate more, and maybe in a couple of years, we'll have more projects because they have to have, they have to want what we have, and they have to remember that we're in their back pocket. So there's multiple ways that we do it. We have the website. We are always increasing our pictures. Today, before I came here, I took a whole, a whole bunch of pictures, stopped by a great motel, stopped by the brewery, and took some photos that I'll be loading on our website because that's the storefront. Our opening rate of our newsletters at thirty-one percent, I used to cry about that until I found out that LA's is fifteen percent, and that thirty-one is actually really high. It's exciting. These location managers are really opening our newsletters and seeing what we have to offer and archiving that. And then being members of these different groups, the past year, two years, we've become a member of AFCI, the International Film Commission, and where, once a year, I go and get educated on how to be a better film commissioner, and the other year, we, or the other end of the year, we go and, go to a trade show and promote the locations that we have to offer. So this year, I actually attended both of those activities. I also joined AICP, which is the Independent Commercial Producers, which they have an office in San Francisco, and that's who I'd be going through if I wanted to pull some of those people up for a fam tour to show them what we have to offer in the area. And getting them here is huge because they can look at pictures all they want, but once they actually physically come here and see it, it's a whole other ballgame, you know? And that was exactly what we experienced on the fam tour when we brought people up a couple of years ago. There's some indirect effects that happen. So, you know, I know it's always, you know, hard when we hear, dang it, why did Disney film in Humboldt? You know? But what ends up happening is, is our name is attached, Humboldt Delnart Film Commission. So every time someone like Ava DuVernay, who directed Thirteenth and the movie Salma, and now Wrinkle in Time, you know, tweets about filming in the area, she mentions that her superhero, favorite superhero, was the lead of Wrinkle in Time that she just directed, and that's a picture of the redwoods that she's standing in. I then commented back about, yes, she was a great superhero, she even writes thank you notes because the lead gave me a thank you note. Ava DuVernay, who's right now the biggest female director there is outside of Wonder Woman, she, she liked the tweet. And then Storm, the actress, actually commented about liking being in the area. And what happens is, is people look up, oh, Humboldt, redwoods, and then they find out there's also redwoods in Delnart. There's really no, I mean, we all know there's a county line, but when it comes to the redwood groves, there's no county line. And that was part of why we ended up saying, hey, let us represent Delnart County, because we were scouting this area all the time anyways, because it's all one big, beautiful region. So there's definitely a direct effect of tourism that can happen, as well as people who are interested in filming just from seeing all of that. Every time Humboldt gets mentioned, Delnart gets mentioned at the same time. Same thing, Location California Magazine, there's a, a California version and an international version. Both were mentioned in both of them.[1752.83] And so, same thing, but it mentions that both counties. So, you automatically, even if it's a photo in Humboldt, it's automatically, your name is in there. As I said, I've been re-elected, or I'm president of Flix, and I've been re-elected as president again, which exposes me to so many more location managers and producers. We put on an award show for location managers for filming in California as a thank you, and I'm, I'm exposed to all of those people, as well as I am the chair of receiving the, their visual and audio for the show. So, I'm contacting location managers who work on major motion pictures and indie films, and asking them for their material. So, and they're, they're aware of who I am and what, what counties they represent. We also put on a conference at CBS Studios that is the only California conference that promotes filming in California. And so, you know, I'm exposed to, that's Gary Marshall before he passed away, the middle director of Liverin and Shirley, and Happy Days, and Pretty and Pink, and, and, you know, the bottom picture is the mayor of LA, as well as Ryan Murphy, who is the producer of like American Horror Story. And he's brought back a whole bunch of television shows to California. So, I'm exposed to these people as president, which again, is free marketing for the area. This year's conference, because we did have a major motion picture in the region, I went on live on television in LA, as well as I did a speech at the conference and introduced the producer of Wrinkle in Time. In the bottom left-hand corner is the location manager of Wrinkle in Time. And then, we also gave an award to Betsy Beers in the right, and she's the producer of Grey's Anatomy and several different TV shows, and she's amazing as well. So, I'm exposed to all of these people, and they, I'm introduced not only as president of Flix, but as the film commissioner for Humboldt and Delmar Counties. And they always talk about our redwoods and how they went camping when they were a child here. Again, here's the Flix newsletter that I mentioned that we are now doing, which is great because again, it's, it's got me as president in there, as well as, you know, we have the biggest movie in the state of California for the California tax incentive. So, there's pictures of redwoods in the newsletter, so that's nice. So, it's indirect marketing for you again. And here again, some more indirect marketing because we have the biggest movie in this area. I was asked to speak at the Capitol about how the California tax incentive is working statewide because we have the biggest movie, and we had it the farthest north from LA. So, we are right now the poster child, the redwood region, for having something this big and showing that it does work. And Senator Mike McGuire had stopped by the set, and like I said, I was asked to do a presentation in front of senators, and it was a joint house and congressman. As I mentioned earlier, I attended the AFCI trade show. I won a lottery to share the booth with the California Film Commission, which meant that everybody who wanted to know all about the commune tax incentives also got to find out everything about Humboldt and Delmar Counties. So, that was fantastic. And it, again, allowed me to run into, on the left, that's Dow Griffith, who was the initial location scout for After Earth, who came up here and very much loved Crescent City, as well as Doug Merrifield on the right, who was the producer of Wrinkle, one of the other producers of Wrinkle in Time. So, again, keeping those relationships alive. And I was also able to attend the Location Managers Guild International Award Show, which the Trailblazer Award was given to Lori Bolton, who actually scouted and brought the Disney movie here. And so, that was really great to be able to see her win an award. We do a red carpet gala during the Academy Awards in February, and where we honor film-friendly locations and, and people for their contribution, for being film-friendly. So, this is our second year giving out the awards. So, that's fantastic because we always honor Delmar County as well in there. And as I mentioned, there's map of the movie brochure. This has been a hot item. We just made ten thousand of them, and we're down to our last three boxes, which is probably about fifteen hundred. And I just dropped off a whole bunch to Jedediah Smith for their state park kiosks there. This is a big one. Everybody loves doing this. We also have this online, so it's printable from our, our website, as well as people can get the brochure at visitors bureaus and at kiosks. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Cassandra, back in the days when, my chamber days, you had a great program that allowed folks to interact, essentially offering their film locations, as you've represented in your last slide here. Is that program still available where people can log on the website and offer their home, or their pasture, or their redwood forest?
Right.
Different locations for shoot? Is that still available?
Yes. So, when you go online, what you can do is you can sign up to either be crew. So, if they have a special skill set, like they do makeup and/or hair, or they want to be a production assistant, they can go on there and sign up and be registered as crew. Then there's, the other side is vendors. So, that would be, if they have a catering company, or they have offices that can rent out. As far as locations go, what we ask them to do is notify us that they have a particular location. We send them a package to sign and fill out. We tell them how to take pictures, or we will come and take the photo. And then, we load those photos ourselves in a photo album on our website. So, there's a couple of different processes. All the information is online, or if anybody just needs help with any of that, they can call or email our office, and we will help them. We're more than willing because we don't necessarily know every detail. And it's not just because my office is in Eureka, because I'm usually in my office. So, even in Humboldt, I don't know all the locations, or all the people, or all the vendors. And, because I'm usually answering other emails and dealing with things, and so, I do need the outside resources of people saying, "Hey, I've got this", or "Hey, I can do that". And we welcome that.
Terrific.
Thanks for asking.
Any questions, Cassandra?
The case with us, we were, we were contacted directly by the film crew, by HGTV to do the filming at our place.
Right, right. And they had reached out to us too. And so, that happens. Sometimes what happens is, is they, a production already knows what they want, and they will call an area or call me and say, "Hey, we already know what we want. We want to come there, and this is what's, what's going on." In other cases, like in particular, the big feature film right now that is interested in coming to this area, I had a location manager who was a friend who said, "Hey, I have a friend who needs rivers. I know you guys got rivers. Can you send me some photos?". And he asked me for a specific type of river. And I went, "I know where that is. That's in Delmar County". And so, I sent him that photo, and I was able to entice them to come up. There's a thing called breakdowns, which they put what phase the movie is in. So, if it's in funding phase, or, or, you know, hasn't been greenlit, or if it is in pre-production, or wherever they are, or if they're actually already shooting in production. And we look for those ones that are not shooting yet, and we look for things like, do they need a river, a beachfront, or, or forests? And so, we can then cold submit to those people. So, there's all different ways a production happens. There's also ways too, like we had a movie, what was the one? Love in the Time of Monster, which just made it on the Top Fifty Bigfoot Movies list, which filmed here. And that, that originally had already planned on filming here. I did not bring that movie here. But what I did do was, I kept it here. Because originally, where they wanted to film, they were accidentally being double-charged by not, they were, they were paying to the lodge, but then, the, the actual federal organization that owned the land underneath it was going to overcharge them. And it was a nine thousand dollar difference, and they said, "We're going to leave. We won't film there. We'll have to film in LA instead." And by stepping in and pointing that out to the federal organization, you're already receiving money from the lodge. How can you also then charge the film crew for a second time? They realized they were double-dipping. They were able to drop it down to two thousand dollars for them using the backfield, which had nothing to do with the lodge. And we kept the movie here. So, sometimes it's, it's, that's the job that we do, you know, in the office. And luckily for me, no fed showed up at my doorstep after making them drop that.
Good.
That I know of. They're following me all right now.
Great. Well, thank you. Is there any public comment at this time on this agenda item? Well, Cassandra, we really appreciate it. I know the county, through our contributions to both the Chamber and the Visitors Bureau, helped definitely support these efforts. How the Board of Directors of the Chamber allocates those funds is up to them. Hopefully, they have it within their budget to continue this type of program. Because I do, as has been suggested by supervisors, do believe it benefits us directly.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for-
Appreciate your time. All right, let's go ahead and move to our ten forty timed agenda item, or time, ten fifty timed agenda item, which is the Chamber Commerce and Visitors Bureau update by Jeff Palmer, Executive Director of the Chamber Commerce. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Supervisors. Chair Howard, Jeff Palmer, Executive Director of the Crescent City, Delmar County Chamber Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And I've been working with Cassandra for four and a half years now, and she's a pleasure to work with, and does try, in her best interest, to promote Delmar County. As you can see, you know, Battery Point Lighthouse is on the cover of the map of the movies brochure. So, you know, I'll talk about relationships and partnerships a little bit more. I do not have a PowerPoint this morning. I'm going to talk about events and promotions. We just got over a big event, Fourth of July, which overall went well. The weather could've cooperated better in the evening. It was a little eerie with the fireworks. Maybe it would've been a good backdrop for a mystery movie. I don't know, but it would've been nicer if, if, you know, the sun would've stayed out, and we had clear skies for the fireworks. But we, to me, it did seem like we had a lot more people in town. Seemed like the parade route was crowded. I know that our bar sales and raffle tickets were higher this year at the DECK Party than last year. We brought in some new entertainment, family-friendly entertainment. Marty Tipton, AKA The Oklahoma Kid, he's a trick ropester, and he really engaged the children. He's a descendant of Roy Rogers, which I didn't know. And then, we also added water bobbles, bungee jumping, and we had the rock wall. So, we tried to increase the number of children activities. But overall, I think it went very well. Unfortunately, there was the accident on 199 that delayed traffic for about two and a half hours. Because we did promote the fireworks and the parade over in Grants Pass and Crest, or Cave Junction with Spectrum Reach, with a digital program, digital campaign. Then also, on the radio with BiCoastal Media, Cool FM and KRWQ. We had heard that Grants Pass had canceled their fireworks, so we thought it was a great opportunity to try to bring people over to the coast. Next up, we have the Grills Gone Wild. Well, this year, it's now called the Redwood Coast Grills Gone Wild. In the past, we had barbecue wars over the Fourth of July. We always wanted to grow that competition, but we weren't successful. Last year, we decided to team with the Find Your Park Committee and hold the contest over Labor Day weekend. It was just a one-day event. This year, we bit the bullet and applied to be sanctioned by the Kansas City Barbecue Society, and we have been approved, and so, we are an official sanctioned event. It'll be two days, September second and third. Again, it will be in conjunction with the Find Your Park. This should be a great boost to the economy in the area. Have a judge coming from Hershey, Pennsylvania. There's a food critic that's a judge that's coming up from Southern California. We'll have teams entering from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, California. So, I think it'll be a really good event. And then, after that, we have Sea Cruise, and that's October sixth and seventh. And again, we're promoting those events through the Visitors Bureau, both on Spectrum Reach in the Rogue Valley, and Cool FM and KRWQ. And I'll explain more of the reason why for that. We're going to combine that with the Beat the Heat campaign, put the heat in your rearview mirror, and invite people to come over and cool off at the coast, but then, at the same time, promote these events that I just mentioned that are coming up. I'm going to give you some visitor stats that we have at our visitor center. Doesn't include the parks. But between 2010, 2012, we averaged eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven visitors a year. Between 2013, 2016, we averaged twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-four a year, and that's up twenty-two percent. This year is looking really good. From June first, or January first to June thirtieth, this year, we have eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-six people to date, up through the end of June, whereas last year, we had seven thousand, three hundred and five. And that's an increase of sixteen percent. We actually had three thousand, one hundred and eighty-two people in June, and normally, we don't break three thousand until July. So, our biggest months are still coming ahead, this month in August, and then September typically is really good as well. We find that those people that come into our visitor center are heading south. Sixty-five percent as a matter of fact, as opposed to thirty-five percent going north. And that's why we've decided to target the Rogue Valley, do more advertising over there, and also more advertising in the Oregon Coast Magazine. That doesn't mean we neglect California. We did a full-page spread in the 2017 California Travel Guide, which includes a full-page editorial. I brought that with me in case you care to see it later. But we don't ignore California, but we are now targeting more of the Southern Oregon region. And then, with TOT, last year, it was point four million for Delmar County, and, or, excuse me, 2015. Then last year, it was point five million. That was a twenty-five percent increase. And then, visitor spending went from a hundred and fourteen and a half million to a hundred and nineteen point four million, which is a four point three percent increase. And then, I want to talk about the importance of partnerships. One, the partnership we have with the Film Commission is a great one. Again, I've been working with Cassandra for four and a half years, and I believe we've made a lot of progress with getting Delmar out there and being more well-known among the, the film community. Of course, we didn't get a Wrinkle in Time, but we may be getting a, a big one this fall, but we're not going to, we're not going to say anything. And then, also, we belong to the North Coast Tourism Council, and I've worked with the Chair of that Council, Richard Strom, for four and a half years. And I just got back from Washington DC International Travel Show, over seventy countries, six thousand journalists, tour operators, and we promote the North Coast Chastica Cascade region. And as a direct result of that show, we have a travel writer coming either this fall or next spring. And then, we have a fam tour from Germany coming in May. So, though, usually, those things take a little bit of wa, time to establish, but, you know, it's pretty nice to get instantaneous results like that. And then, through the North Coast Tourism Council, our presence with Visit California has gotten a lot bigger. We were featured on the Visit California website with North Coast itineraries. Battery Point Lighthouse is on the front page. And so, we didn't, used to be noticed by Visit California, but at least now, we are a blip on the radar. And so, we're making progress in that respect. That particular website, the Visit California website, has three point seven million users in just one quarter. So, it does reach a lot of people. So, we do get a lot of exposure through them. Richard, I invited him to be here today, but he's actually over in the UK right now promoting the North Coast to tour operators. So, the partnership we have with both the Film Commission and the North Coast Tourism Council are very valuable because we can get a lot more promotion for Delmar County by utilizing those organizations. We have a feature on the North Coast Tourism Council website that provides a link to our website, and they just got done doing a blog, which featured the beer trail going from Mendocino County up to Delmar County, including Seaquake and Port of Pints. So, that's kind of nice to get that recognition as well. On September ninth, we have a group of journalists, bloggers, and videographers with adventure travel. They're coming with a representative from Visit California. They will be spending the night in Delmar County, which is a coup, because normally, they will stay in Humboldt, maybe come up and stay in Crescent City for a day, and then go back down. So, we actually get to have them overnight. So, that's, that's positive news as well. And then, looking to the future, we are taking a look at hiring a marketing firm to redevelop our website and do a branding campaign. And the future, we're going to continue to move forward, but we're going to take a look at some things and do some restructuring.
Thank you for that presentation, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff at this time? Jerry?
Yeah, I was just curious. You said there was a twenty-five percent increase in TOT?
Mm-hmm, according to Dean Runyon.
But there was only a four percent increase in spending?
Visitor spending, yes.
Okay. I don't know how those two numbers meet, match up, but it doesn't look like they match up very well. It seems like we should increase spending a little more. If your TOT is going to increase by twenty-five percent, seems like spending should increase a considerable amount more. I'm just, I don't know, I don't know where those numbers come from or how they work, but-
The TOT is taken from the hotel receipts. The visitor spending is from credit cards, debit cards at attractions like Ocean World, Trees and Mystery, restaurants, stores. So, I don't know the answer, Jerry, but evidently, they're spending the night in the hotels, and that is something that I've noticed, people are staying longer. It used to be, just getting to stay one night was a struggle, but a lot of times- So, I don't know the answer, Jerry, but evidently, they're spending the night in the hotels, and that is something that I've noticed, people are staying longer. It used to be just getting to stay one night was a struggle, but a lot of times, now, people are coming into the visitor center, and they're staying two, three nights here. So, maybe the TOT is going up because of that, but not the spending, but it doesn't make sense. You're correct.
Supervisor?
Jeff is always, I'm always impressed with the job you do and keep up the good work. I remember I asked you this question, I want to say a couple of years back, and the TOT was somewhere at 326,000 for the county, and the city was, I think, 1.1 million. Does that ring a bell to you, those numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Are you at liberty to discuss the increase in TOT for the city? I want to see if this is incremental or unique to our county.
I didn't put down the city increase. Thirrs has been always higher than the counties. I mean, they have more rooms, so obviously, it has been higher. But as far as a percentage increase, if it is the same, more or less, I can find out.
Yeah, but I just, I'm really impressed by the fact that it's a half million dollars. That's a new number that's hit my eardrum now in TOT, which is a very exciting number, and one in which I think is portails for a bright future for more visitors coming in, spending the night, spending more money, and hopefully, that'll reflect on an continuing increasing TOT. I don't know what the numerator, denominator is, how many rooms are, we actually have in the county, but I would say that it's, if they're operating at higher than a certain percentage, and it keeps going up to near 100 percent, that's room for more expansion of hotels outside of the city limits. So, I think your efforts are paying off, and people are coming up here and spending time and money, and I appreciate and want to recognize that.
Thank you, Roger.
Supervisor Callen?
Thanks, Jeff. It's always interesting. I think my take, Supervisor Hemmingson, may be that I know owning a business about, not half, but close to it is cash, and if they're just counting credit card receipts, that may be, I'm not sure. Be interesting to see how they are arriving at the, in sales. Is it strictly credit card?
Yeah, because I don't know how they would track the cash.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they do the credit cards and debit cards by zip code, so they can track that, but cash, a little bit different.
Yeah. So, my question is Visitors Bureau. I've got an email saying it's being dissolved. So, what's going on with that?
The original Visitors Bureau as we knew it has been dissolved. We're reforming to include our funders, which would be the county, the city, the harbor if they so choose, and then two members of the Executive Board of the Chamber and myself. And that'll be the core committee, and then we will have a, what we would call a think-tank committee, that would get together and come up with ideas and promotions to bring to the core committee.
So, the core committee would be the Visitors Bureau, separate from the Chamber of Commerce?
Correct.
So, 84,000 comes from the county to the Chamber. How is that split up between the Visitors Bureau and the Chamber?
Visitors Bureau gets 63,400, if I'm correct.
So, a big bulk of that?
Yeah, huge bulk of that.
Okay. Just want to make sure. And then, okay, the other one's probably, so it's not really dissolved as the wording was, it's more of a restructuring?
Restructuring, correct.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Jeff one more question?
Please.
It occurred to me, the other Sunday, Angie and I had an opportunity to go up to Brookings and see the concert in Azalea Park, and there must have been 1,000 people there, lots of them from Delnort County. Do you envision an event like that taking place in Front Street Park, where you have the tribute, the Abbey Lane Tribute Band coming in? It was really quite popular. Do you envision that kind of event coming to perhaps the Pick Your Park event or something like that in the future? Is that something that could be, has been looked at?
Well, I certainly would love to see it, but I think we would need an amphitheater. I don't know if anyone was at the Labor Day Festival last year, but the wind was awful. It was terrible. And I think that is probably the biggest hindrance to doing movies in the park, any type of concerts in the park. Unless you have some kind of a band shell or something that is sheltered, I don't know how well it'd work.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Just a public comment on this presentation? Please. Good morning.
Brian Stone, Harbor Commissioner.
Brian.
Just to give you, you asked a question about the TOT. It's one of the things that I've been investigating for the harbor and looking at different revenue sources for us. Just to let you know, the actual number for the TOT right now that I just picked up yesterday was $469,000 for the county. For the city, it was right at four, excuse me, $1,490,000, I think is the number on the city. So, I just wanted to qualify that for him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? So, bringing it back to the board, Jeff, absolutely appreciate your presentation, the frequency, love to see you hear more. This county has made terrific steps over time with many public and private partners to make that investment of public funds in marketing and tourism. Whether it's through the investment that the Chamber makes with the Humboldt-Delnort County Film Commission, or whether it's your efforts through the Visitors Bureau that will now be restructured, but to bring that next new visitor to Delnort County are absolutely essential. As we know, we struggle here economically for many reasons, with timber and commercial fishing having waned over the past 20 years. The resurgence of a new industry, tourism in particular, it was a vision of many in our community, whether it was the council economic advisors, whether it's Tri-Agency, whether it was the Chamber of Commerce taking the lead more than a decade ago now, to make that public investment, it was critical. And I think you're seeing the fruits of those labors after decades worth of work of that public investment, and that return that we see coming in is being directly reflected, not only in the numbers that you see walking through the doors of the visitor center, not only visitation to our national parks, but also with those dollars being spent in our hotel rooms. That is a direct measurement of the success of the Visitors Bureau and that marketing. There's no question in my mind, when we started down this road in 2006, that the numbers for the city in particular were below 800,000. And if Brian's numbers are correct, and it is close to 1.5 million now, that is substantial growth. Jeff, and I would encourage you today, whether it's the county's TOT receipts, whether it's the city's TOT receipts, whether it's other information that is being gleaned from measurements that were specifically lined out in reports that were generated in those six, that you come back and you make sure that you're saying those investments of public funds are directly resulting in net revenues to this county's general fund. This board in particular, whether it's investment of $60,000 a year or a little bit more that goes into that Visitors Bureau budget, needs to consider that ROI in our future investments. And if you're seeing that direct result, that ROI, coming back that strongly, especially in something like TOT, you need to be asking for more. Your board needs to be asking for more, and I'd encourage you to do so, because this is one of the only areas, tourism, that I could see right now as having the most fast-paced effect to turn not only our general fund revenues around, where we could invest more in things like public safety, but in addition, our local businesses that generate those tax dollars that come back to the county also. So, I really encourage the Chamber Board, I'd encourage you to be more of an advocate, and toot your own horn when you have that opportunity to show the direct effects that you have gained through these efforts of marketing. We appreciate your time today and hope to see you again soon. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to item number 20, which is considered miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnort. CAO?
There are no requests in front of you today. I will note that I spoke with Supervisor Getlin yesterday. He had a question in regards to potential Senate bill that, that was a, a transaction cost to real estate. I did a little bit of looking into that since then, and there indeed has been SB 2 introduced, and it was by Atkins out of San Diego. It's a $75, not to exceed $225 transaction fee that would go towards affordable housing. And at this point, it was just introduced, so I have really no idea how successful it might be. But we'll bring something back for the board, hopefully at the next meeting if it's timely. In addition, I just got a note here while we were meeting from Van Skoyek, and it appears that the House has put a proposal on EAS for fiscal years 18 through 23, and it includes an increase in funding. So, that is a positive step. That is not a definitive step.
It's a positive step.
Considering that we are the poster child for EAS, you know, we, we have Van Skoyek back there that are advocating for this on a, basically, a weekly basis for us, and it's a positive step in the sense that the House has put that out there. And then we'll see how the argument goes.
Glad the argument went well, at least in this case.
I think so.
Is there anything to report out on the state side, in particular with our letter that went in during the last meeting to the Senate bill that is of great concern? I can't actually remember the number of that bill, but it's one that I've heard quite a bit of communication about, not only from RCRC, but CSAC.
There were amendments to the rural broadband bill that were significant, and since our letter went in supporting the language, those amendments were so significant that we received from the Senator of, oh, it was Connie Stewart's group out of Humboldt County, as well as RCRC and CSAC, we were asked to rescind our support, which I couldn't get a letter from the board in time, but based on the amendments, I had sent them an email saying that based on those changes, our letter of support no longer applied. There is a lot of concern over that because they basically carved out all of rural California. And so, the benefits that were in that language were gone. They are now having that discussion, and with the pressure put on by a lot of counties as well as CSAC and RCRC, I think that discussion will change how that amendment is handled in the future.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, other questions or items? Very good. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for our last item, which is Supervisors' Supervisor Callen, why don't you feel free to kick us off today?
So, I had a meeting with Dr. Senkus and Erin Goodwin and a few other vets regarding the homeless situation in Delnort County, so I gave them an update on the No Place Like Home Initiative, and I'm meeting with all five gentlemen again this afternoon. I attended the CSAC Dinner at the Carson House, which Humboldt County hosted. It was a very nice event to kick off the meetings. We had the following day, all on cannabis, which was also very informative and interesting. Attended a meeting with Senator McGuire on the homeless, again, the No Place Like Home Initiative. And our next step is we will be talking with nonprofits to see if we can work with some type of partnership and bring them in to make this all work. Had a meeting with Jan Mortman, a business owner down in Klamath, to discuss the Chamber, TOT, and Klamath businesses. And we had an Airport Authority meeting. They have started construction. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Getlin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, after the last meeting, I also attended, for the day only, went down to the California State Association of Counties for Regional Meeting in Eureka. That was the subject of cannabis. The subjects in the, and let me be very clear, it is law, and it will effectuate on January 1st, 2018. So, this is, discussions were on the, developing a local program, working with the cannabis industry and the environmental considerations. Those were the three subcategories. Now, I've made my point very clear in my position on this product, this problematic project, but Delnort County indeed does have options, and it need not be embraced here in Delnort County as it has been in Humboldt County. So, in the coming weeks, this board will be tasked with choices ranging from embracing the ALMA, Adult Use Marijuana Act, or highly restricting its growth and distribution. So, that will be, and we'll have in our next discussion at the Cannabis Workshop scheduled here in this room. I believe it's July 17th, which is a Monday, and it is at 2:30. So, we'll see how that plan pans out in terms of what Delnort County's options are with this newly embraced act. Sunday, attended the Delnort County Emergency Food and Shelter Program, local board in its application for its newest phases. This is feeding hungry people and offering them shelter. Currently, it's moving forward on Phase 33. It's still not through with Phase 32. This get a little complicated, with the paperwork being a little slow. The group is called Dorkus. I'm pleased to report that I asked some questions with regard to feeding the needy, and is anybody going hungry in Delnort County, especially seniors? And I learned from this meeting that the community has actually picked up the slack. The tribe has picked up the slack, and churches out in Smith River. So, there are no seniors who are falling through the cracks, according to this Dorkus group. I was very pleased to hear that, because three years ago, we stopped Wheels on Wheels, and I had great concern about that. But I'm told now that they're, either those people are no longer in the picture, they don't live in that area, or they in fact are being fed by these community groups, so my hat's off to them. As you know, the grand jury report was released. Board will have an opportunity to review it, I'm sure, in the coming weeks. Subjects addressed were code enforcement, the lack of adequate fire services in Klamath, emergency homeless condition situation. Of course, Borrow Ranch and Juvenile Hall and the jail were all addressed, as was Alder Fire Camp. And I hope in the coming weeks, we'll have an opportunity to discuss some of the recommendations as put forward by the grand jury in helping solve some of these issues. Day before July 4th, Supervisor Berkowitz and I were tired of looking at the trash strewn upon a vacant lot, so we just went over there and shoveled and black-bagged and bagged it all up. And coincidentally, the errant, itinerant RV was hauled out that afternoon, and the bags were picked up courtesy of recollection at no charge to the public, and the lot is free at that point, so this is good news. Wednesday, after the parade, I went to the County Planning Commission meeting, which as you know, it was in the paper this morning, granted, the Planning Commission granted a conditional use permit to Daily Bread to operate 13 homeless beds, beds in our shelter. And this is again, it's a complicated issue, but I was impressed with the commissioners navigating this very difficult issue, this NIMBY attitude, not in my backyard at the same time. Where are these folks going to go? Living in the bushes is not an alternative, and it creates more problems this way. There's a cot for them to sleep on and 13 beds. So, we're addressing the issue in a manner which is as responsible as we can possibly Also met with Michael Thornton of True North. Couple of weeks back, the folks at True North partnered up with the Uroch Tribal Nation and were announcing a recreational program for children. Michael wanted to meet with me, with, hear my thoughts, and True North, we don't see the world the same way, but we do have a lot in common. And my issue is, of course, it has to be inclusive to all youth. It can't be gender-generated, it can't be race or ethnicity-generated for any youth in these programs, whether it be recreational, any other participation, that it has to be inclusive to all people. In this particular case, the Klamath Recreation Community, that it has to be open. So, I was also honored to speak at the monthly meeting of the Republican Women Federated, where we discussed the new marijuana law, and they just released grand jury. Also participated in the July 4th parade, which in my opinion, was about as well-attended and as large a parade as I've seen in my near 10 years up here. And Sunday, Angie and I enjoyed a concert in the park in Brookings at Azalea Park. I'm guesstimating, there were about 1,000 folks from both sides of the border, enjoying Beatles tunes, and hard to believe, a half a century ago. And that's my report.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Had a Tri-Agency meeting, not much to discuss there. Had a tri-agency meeting, not much to discuss there. As Supervisor Callen mentioned, we met with Senator McGuire on the homeless No Place Like Home initiative, and for Supervisor Berkowitz's information, it was not in the paper. Later that afternoon, or later that morning, Supervisor Howard and I, along with others in the ag community, met with Senator McGuire on the elk issue as well as the grazing lease issue. That also was not in the paper. If any of you have read Mr. Berkowitz's editorial, you'll know why I'm saying that. Celebrated my daughter's birthday, went to a celebration of life for Wally Maciel, who was a longtime resident of Delnor County, well-liked. Anyway, sad, but he had a great life. Attended the 4th of July festivities, as was noted earlier. Had a meeting with the Talawadini Nation, Supervisor Howard, along with CAO Serena and I on their, had a two-by-two with them, talking about some land legislation as well as our known-at-loss policy. Had a phone conference along with county council and Supervisor Howard and community development director Heidi Kuntzel with Kelly Smith, as well as the state council on Pacific Shores Cleanup Project. We're working through some issues on that, and hopefully we'll get that squared away. Supervisor Callen said we had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. The terminal is under construction. You're sort of invited to drive by and take a look at that. And as well, we got a kind of a prestigious award, the Western Region Airport Safety Award for Jack McNamara Field. So the competition was pretty stiff, fairly large airports, San Diego, I think, as well as Orange County, maybe, something like that. Anyway, it was pretty neat to get that. Also had a staff meeting to discuss the tribal management draft record of decision, the responses that came from the Forest Service on the objections, which the county was part of. And I've been working on this for 10 and a half years, and I think we're finally coming to the end of it. And I was not the, that's only the amount of time that I've been working on it since, that's as long as I've been a supervisor, but before that, it seems to me like there was a couple of years that they've been working on. So this has been a long, drawn-out process, and I think we may be getting to the end of it. Hopefully, if there's no litigation, we will. And also celebrated anniversary. So 44 years, if anybody's asking. I always say 30 wonderful years, but you know, out of 44, that's not too bad.
Thank you, Supervisor Hemmingson. That's actually wonderful. Congratulations. 44 years is quite an achievement.
It is for her. Pretty easy for me.
Yeah, it's so true. It is. Attended a meeting, First Five Families Commission, to discuss for several hours the Wonder Bus and the future of the Wonder Bus here in our community. There's no question it served a real need around literacy and children here. We hope with waning funding, we could find mechanisms to help that Wonder Bus continue, and with, I think, the group that has been assembled by First Five Family Commissions, there's enough energy in the room to really make that happen. And I know through direction of our budget, I'm sure there's ways we could work to make that happen. I know Director Snow, being participatory in that meeting, will find the solutions on the county side, and I'm sure there's something that we could bring back to the board for consideration here in the future. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, attended the tri-agency meeting, and also attended, as Supervisor Callen mentioned, the CSAC dinner in Humboldt County, and in addition, the Humboldt Marijuana Conference. As Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, I'd really like folks to participate in the upcoming July 17th meeting at 2:30, when our friends from Yolo County will present factual information on what their experience has been with implementation of marijuana legislation in their backyard and how it's affecting county departments and their fiscal budget. And I think it should be fairly eye-opening to our community as we begin to weigh this as a Board of Supervisors. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, met with Senator McGuire on a continuing issue that's been around now for about the last three and a half years, not only elk, but the state lands issue. The state lands issue is rather pertinent because several of our fellow farmers in our area have leased state lands from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for many years, and then three years ago, it was dissolved for a hiccup within their legal department. Those lands still have not been returned to management, and they've become fallow, they've become full of noxious weeds, and they've been left unmanaged out there around Lake Earl. And I know our senator has been working diligently, along with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, to try to free up those lands to be once again managed and get away from this hiccup. However, what was proposed to area farmers, what was proposed to Delnor County Board of Supervisors that participated in that meeting, and what was proposed to Senator McGuire was far beyond what any of us had imagined. Some resolution to these lease arrangements on state lands would be, and I'm hoping to further this discussion with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, so we could come to some meaningful resolution on how better to manage those lands for wildlife species and get out of our situation where we have a forest of noxious weeds and unmanaged land. Participated in an agenda review. As Supervisor Hemmingson also attended the Talawadini Nation two-by-two and the Pacific Shores Cleanup Meeting. And I'll close my comments with a special recognition to my parents that made it to their 50th anniversary. Very strong, supportive people in my life and my brother's life, very supportive of me personally throughout the years, not only in this position. I know my mom gets fairly riled up whenever she sees some strong discussions amongst this board, but at the same time, I tell my mom, you know what, Mom? You just got to let it roll off your shoulders sometimes. So as we move forward over the next year and a half, and our uncertain future in certain instances, I just got to tell my parents, congratulations in making it 50 years. I know you guys will go quite a bit longer, but love your support, hope it continues. And that, on that note, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting for today. Thank you for attending.